Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming on this frigid morning here in Minnesota to our annual legislative forum with Representative Chris Wazinski and Senator Gary Deans. We appreciate you all coming. Chris and Gary, appreciate you making time in your day and making Marshall your first stop here on your tour today. And of course, thank you for all the work that you do at the Capitol every single year. Again, I'm not going to take much time. It's a shorter session this year than last year. There's a lot of things to get done, so I'm not going to take more time. We're going to shoot it right over to you. Gary?
Sure, thank you. Thank you. For having some coffee and some good things. I was looking forward to that. I almost stopped in the way, but I'm like, I bet you he'll have something there. No, appreciate you all coming out this morning. Chris Wazinski, your state rep. This year, it's going to be a little bit shorter session. Normally, just from a scheduling standpoint, the second session of the biennium is normally a little bit shorter, more focused, less on budgetary issues, hopefully, and more on bonding and policy. And so this session will be really focused quite a bit on bonding. The bonding committees have been traveling. I know the Senate's been around quite a bit. Maybe Gary will tell you a little bit about that. Just looking at kind of the priorities across the state. We did a fairly robust bonding bill last year. That was kind of a makeup bill because the previous session prior to that, because of some shenanigans at the end, it kind of fell through the cracks. And so we're able to make a pretty good investment in that with wastewater and the rest and hopefully do the same again from a road perspective and also heaper for our colleges and universities, but also some water stuff as well and also local projects. And obviously, our goal here is to work on a project that would benefit this facility here in the city of Marshall. From a budgetary standpoint, you know, the November forecast came out a little while back. That put us about $188 million in the red, which is, you know, on state perspective terms, it's not that big of a number because if you estimate, the state of Minnesota brings, you know, $50 or $60 million a day in taxable revenue. So it's about three days' worth of revenue. You stretch that out over a few months and a few good months right in there can make a big difference. We, I think just the last month, the positive revenue was $160 million over forecast. So, you know, that's going to be a really, we might be zero, we might be a little bit plus, we might be really big plus, or it could be negative. Really, it's on economic growth. And so that, that number was based on a 2.2% economic growth forecast. And so obviously, the economy's growing a bit better than that. I think we're at a 3-3-3-2 clip. So depending on what that percentage means and taxable revenue, that'll be the ultimate telltale kind of where those dollars will be. You know, the university's got a big ask from the Minskew standpoint. I think they're looking for $10 million across the board throughout their system and a lot of other priorities as well. So with that, Senator Deans, we can...
Well, thank you, Chris, and thank you folks for being here today. We certainly do appreciate it. We like to get out a couple times a year and do these town hall meetings and get people's input before the session starts and then come back after the session and talk about the bills and stuff that did get passed. We're going to have an interesting Senate session this year. We've got a few things that typically, they're a little abnormal. Usually, this is a bonding and a policy year, and so we go in with bonding and policy in mind, plus sometimes we have supplementary budget in the second year of the biennium. But we're in a little different situation this year. We have a special election coming up February 12th. Right now, the majority is held by the Republicans in the Senate. We have 34 members in the majority, 33 in the minority. So I felt we did a lot of good legislation got passed last year, and that was done by working across the aisle because of those very tight numbers. Interestingly enough, in December, we had a senator that resigned, and that senator's on the DFL side. That is going to be a very, very close race. That race, that will be decided February 12th, that is a special election. So if the Republicans would take that seat, then we would be 35-32. If we would lose that seat, we'd be back to 33-34, and so everything would be fine. But there's just another little glitch in the gears, and that is when Governor Dayton appointed Tina Smith to be the new senator for Minnesota at the federal level, the president of the Senate is automatically required to become the lieutenant governor, and she had, he or she would have no choice. So the president of the Senate with us being a majority is President Fishbach, who is also a Republican. She has taken the lieutenant governor's job, and she's acting as lieutenant governor, but she's also continuing her position as Senate. And there is precedent, five times in the past where that has happened, when it's been a short time period. And so the senator that's been moved up to lieutenant governors maintained both of those positions. There is a lawsuit that's been filed against Michelle because somebody in her district doesn't feel that she can give appropriate attention, appropriate attention to both the lieutenant governor's position and the Senate. So we'll see how that lawsuit works out. But that lawsuit, if it works out that the courts and the Supreme Court decides that she's not able to do both, we would then have a special election for that seat. If that is decided prior to February 20th, we could open up the session with a 33-33 representation from both parties. The majority would still not change because it takes 34 members to flip a majority. So we would still be in the majority, but we'd have a 33-33 vote until the special election. When that special election is held, if we would hold that seat, then we'd go back to 34-33. But if we would lose that seat, we could actually have a change of the majority in the middle of a session. And that would probably be one of the first times in history that something like that had happened. So we've got some interesting things. We will work through them. I'm not concerned about that. But we've got some very interesting things coming up in the Senate besides doing the regular legislative stuff, so stay tuned. It'll be interesting to see how this all works out, but like I said, we'll get it figured out. With that said, the first thing I want to do is I want to thank all the folks that was involved in the bonding tour at the Merit Center. If you weren't here, and I'm sure many of you were not here when the bonding tour was here, but the folks that managed the process here to do the presentation for the Merit Center, for the Senate Bonding Committee when we were here, just did a bang-up job. They made you folks proud, trust me. They really showed why the Merit Center is important. They showed a lot of the things that are they're doing at the Merit Center, a lot of the expansions they want to do, and they literally took the bus out and took us around the track and showed what they wanted to do there, even though it was late at night. We had a police escort around the track. It was very interesting. So I just wanted to give a large, hats off and a large hand to all the people involved with that. You did a fine job. And Dr. Gores and Bill, you guys did a great job over at the college. We truly appreciated it. We visited probably four or five colleges this last two, in the last two tours, and we had dinner usually at most of the colleges, and you folks stand very tall, your culinary department does. We had an excellent meal that night, plus it was good to have the ARI and you folks do your presentations. So thank you very much for that. Chris mentioned a little about the budget. It's kind of interesting, when we got the November forecast, as Chris alluded to, we had $188 million deficit, but that did not include the funding for the legislative body because that, Governor Dayton, Governor Dayton had vetoed the funding for the legislative body at the end of the session. And as the process worked through and went through the Supreme Court, the lower court agreed that the governor could not veto it, so then it went to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court, instead of vacating the veto, basically what they did is they said that they didn't feel, well, they actually had passed a ruling that they did not have the authority to allocate dollars that should be allocated by the legislative body. So that's how they avoided making a decision on that. And so we were able to make arrangements and get some funding, some limited funding to continue. So the first bill we will have when we open up session will be a bill to reinstate the budget and the funding for the legislative body, and Governor Dayton has agreed to sign that. So that'll be the first bill. It'll originate in the House, come to the Senate, we'll pass it out, go to the governor's office, and hopefully then that'll be signed, and then we'll move forward. Other things that are sitting out there, this being a bonding year, we have put in the budget last year. We put in the budget for $800 million of bonding this year. And I say when we put that in the budget, it cost quite a few dollars to do bonding. And so those dollars have to be allocated in the biennial budget. So we're at about $800 million. The governor has asked for $1.5 billion. However, last year, when he signed the budget bill, he did sign the budget bill with the $800 million in it. My thoughts are it's going to be between $800 and $900 million. It's going to be a little tougher sledding probably in the Senate side. We tend to have more senators that do not like to do bonding, so it's a little tough sledding there. But we do have to have 42 votes, so we have to have, in this case, we have to have eight votes from the DFL. So usually, we come up with a pretty good bonding bill, and a couple years ago, the DFL had had quite a few of our votes. So usually, we come up with a pretty good bonding bill that's pretty cross-section of support, so in a cross-section project. So with that said, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions, so...
And to all the standards, this isn't church. I mean, these are, these are nice seats right over here.
So we'll go up and, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions.
So, the whole federal tax reform bill that just went through, how does the state have to conform to that? How does it affect, you know, businesses from the state side, nonprofits alike?
Well, if, typically what happens is one of the first bills we do in session is a tax conformity bill. And usually, the bills are not a major bill like this, so it's a pretty, usually it's mostly family credits and stuff like that, and that bill passes other rapidly. This year, this is a much further-reaching bill, and so what my assumption is we'll do is we'll come in and we'll pass the family conformity part of it right away, and then the other portions of it, and we've already, in the Senate, and I can't speak for the House, in the Senate, we already have our researchers researching that very thoroughly to see what we would need to do at the state level, because if we leave it like it is, the state would ratchet up many, many more dollars of taxes. This would bring in many more state dollars in taxes. So we want to keep it neutral. So I think we'll do the family credit probably right away and then come back shortly after that and take a look at what we need to, to adjust the other things so that people aren't being penalized because of the federal tax program. So that's, and Chris, you want to go with that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, essentially, you know, that's, you know, a tax conformity, and, you know, the biggest thing we hear about, especially within estate planning, is, you know, there's a, that's probably the largest difference of where the federal government is and where the state of Minnesota is, you know, on estates and planning, you know, passing that farm down or passing a business down. And those are, you know, whenever you're doing that, only in government do you consider keep, letting people keep their own tax dollars as cost to the state of Minnesota. So, you know, depending on what the budget for every tax relief you get or tax conformity measure you do to conform with the federal government, it costs state dollars, so you have to be able to allocate a portion of your budget to tax relief, and then that would move forward as a spending, quote-unquote, "spending" bill as part of the priority set. So, you know, it really depends on how those numbers line up and, you know, as Gary said in the Senate, their number crunchers are working on what that conformity would look like, and the same here in the House. And so what those numbers will look like, I'm not sure. I'm not a tax chair, so we'll see. So, but, yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah.
So, in, it's also Minnesota here, there's lots of broadband, Tony and Tony, must the appetite of, let the state fore, allocate more broadband?
Well, you know, I think it's definitely part of the mix. You know, we've really seen a huge investment when it came with the Super Bowl coming in. We had a lot of interest. We passed a few bills to allow 5G, and the way that networking works, that's actually, obviously focused quite a bit in the metro. Our goal is to hopefully move a lot of that infrastructure out to the rest of the state as that progresses. You know, I think, I forget exactly what we moved forward last year, but we were able to get a couple really big local projects, Milroy, and then all the cities along Highway 68 to Canby, up towards Canby. And so, you know, it's an incremental issue when you're dealing with fiber. You know, there's two different lines of thought on that. It's, you know, fiber, you know, hard line backing and then some broadcast, or do you do hard backing to every single home? And, you know, from a finance standpoint, you know, you do fiber to every single home, whether a person actually hooks up to it or not, you know, the costs are, they're pretty high. So you may have, you know, a grandma that lives in a house, or, you know, by law, a lot of those houses will get something drawn to it even though they may not ever hook up. And at $5,000 of cost per, you know, you know, what's the balance? And there's been a lot of communities across the state, Lax County is engaged with different types of developers to bring in really good, I mean, high-quality internet that is backed with fiber, but may not right to the home. And I think the whole county costs $10 million to do into that route. And so, you know, what's that mix? And sometimes that just simply doesn't work. You know, you've got large businesses, large industries, engineering firms that send huge files of drawings that need to be someplace long ways away in a really short period of time, and they don't have five hours to upload it. So those uploads and download speeds are very important when it comes to that mix. So my guess is that there'll be another investment made in that, but it really just depends on how the finances are. I mean, it takes, that's a cash, it's a cash investment that we make, so...
One of the things that the rural legislators have pushed very hard for is to get the on-served first, then the underserved. What's getting, and so then, some of the communities that are not Class 1 cities but getting fairly close, they kind of got wise to what we were doing, so then they wanted to start splitting the pot and designating so much for on-served and so much for underserved, because then they would be eligible to get a lot more of those dollars, because they could have much higher speeds maybe than what Marshall does, but still be considered to be underserved because of their needs. So we've really been putting a lot of pushback because we want to make sure that we get rural Minnesota, our smaller communities and stuff up to, you know, get them going. When I was out door knocking in 2016, I had talked to a family, and they lived 12 miles from the school, and their internet service was so poor that it would take so many hours for the three kids to do the homework at night, that they would drive into the local library every night and have the three children do their homework and then go back. And I give credit to parents that are willing to do that because that's great. But it really shows we have some issues and that, you know, it really affects a lot of things besides industry and agriculture. It affects the students right in the classroom. So I really think we need to continue to work on the on-served and the underserved, and then once we get that, you know, cleared up, then start moving the speeds up. As far as the dollars putting in, the last two bienniums, the industry comes up with kind of a maximum that they feel they can absorb within a biennium as far as construction goes, and the last two bienniums, we've been pretty much pushing that cap. And I would think that we will probably do a sizable piece again this coming bonding year because we started to get the mentality at the legislature that this is like roads and electricity and everything else. It's, you've got to have a good highway system, but you also have to have a good internet system. And it really starts hampering these small communities when they have poor internet access because there's a lot of people that like to work from home, maybe work for somebody in the cities, but work out here in a small community, or just small businesses that need that internet service. So hopefully, we will continue to move that forward. Other questions? Comments? David?
Well, there's a vacancy for the other statewide offices. Attorney General, Secretary of State, Parker. Governor nominates someone, I don't think it comes to the Senate, it hasn't happened in decades, but the governor makes a replacement. For some, whatever historical reasons, lieutenant governorship was treated differently. Is there constitutional amendment in the works that would put LG vacancies on the same basis as these others? Put up a...
Not that I'm aware of. And I think that the, I think the difference in, and there's a, I think there's a reason for that, David. If a constitutional officer passes away or retires or resigns, you've got a staff that can step right in. With the lieutenant governor, if the lieutenant governor and the president, or the governor were killed in a plane crash, there would be nobody to continue the legacy on because the lieutenant governor, or if the president got killed, or the lieutenant, if they both got killed at the same time, there wouldn't be a governor to appoint somebody. So I think that's why it's automatic, the president of the Senate moves into that position.
Taking that point, yes, isn't there something in the Constitution about a line of succession?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have that in place. It seems like it'd be a simple matter and very consistent approach, most other states do it this way also, to put those two features together. So I encourage you all to look at that.
Sure.
Yep, good point. The line of succession right now is it's always the last-appointed president of the Senate. So let's say that Michelle Fishbach was killed in an accident, then it would move down to the next one. But probably not necessarily the best way to do it, considering that they cannot not accept the position. I mean, they have to accept the position. And the issue is, is a lot of people say, well, why don't Michelle just resign from the lieutenant governor's job? It'd be pretty simple. But she's the last-appointed president, so the thing just rolls and rolls. I mean, she is always going to come back as lieutenant governor until she resigns from being president. So, yep, good question.
And you just can't, I mean, you can't, I mean, all politics is politics in a way, and you can't discount the fact that there was some chess being played in the back room thinking, how would this work? And, you know, how could we make, make this a little difficult? So, but...
Next question.
Yeah. All in fun, I'm sure, but...
Talk about the preemption bill last year. It got pretty far. And do you see it going any further this year, or do you think it'll get to Governor Dayton's desk again? Do you want something in trade, or will you just not go for it?
Well, I think Governor Dayton's fairly well dug in on this particular issue. Preemption is the, whether or not, you've got state law, and then you've got local municipalities, you know, essentially, minimum wage is kind of what, you know, the main kicker. You've got a few cities going to 15 or putting things on a grade and trying to address that from a state. We believe that, you know, because we have so many people that work across the state, whether you're a bus driver and you're delivering high school kids to a volleyball game at the Excel Center, or Target, or wherever they play, you know, and how to address those issues when it comes to delivering those people and working in that city for a short period of time. And as a business owner, we feel that you should have, you know, one state law, you got a state minimum wage, that's the way it should be. And that's what the preemption bill would do, is kind of allow, you know, that type of a policy to be set forth statewide. And I've made the argument in meetings in the past as well that, well, there's a ton of different issues that could be important for Marshall, that they would like to differentiate themselves from the rest of the state. Maybe have a right-to-work county. You know, maybe have any number of those types of, you know, different policies that maybe you have a policy at the state, and maybe the local municipalities or a local county wants to do something different, that would be maybe anti-labor or anti, you know, so that's the real questions that you have, is say, all of a sudden, you start having a patchwork of policy across the state. Sometimes people like it, sometimes people don't. Well, then what's the proper role? Well, should we just have a state? And that's what preemption bill would do. I don't think he'll sign it. So unless other cities would start doing other things that the governor didn't like. And that's why I bring up those particular issues, to say, well, I mean, that's how you would build that case, that's why it's important, is to all of a sudden really create a very complex, that doesn't just deal with minimum wage, but deals with a myriad of different issues. Like having a county that says, you know, we're banning buffers, or all those things. So it should be a great idea.
I think we had, I kind of felt it was going to get signed there for a while because I think that we had some offers on the table for Governor Dayton that were very attractive for him to sign this, but then the powers that be got, the pressure got on, and I don't see, I don't see anything being done with that till we get a new governor. And when I say a new governor, I don't know that it's going to make much difference with party it's in because there's an awful lot of people on the other side of the aisle that do not agree with, you know, with this issue too. So I think it's a matter of, that'll be it for another year. We'll certainly be talking about this year. I don't hold my breath, it's going to get very far, because what was on the table last year, if that don't do it, I don't hope there's any chance. But very good question. Other questions or comments?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Since you're talking about comments, I just want to say thank you for a couple different things. So I work for Minnesota Last County Technical College, and I want to thank you for your work with the meal seed dollars for, and Senator Deans, a president on that committee, helping support farm business management and education of our farmers for that. So know that that's made a substantial impact on our college and our community and our agricultural folk. Also want to thank you for the support with the grant dollars for the career academies within southwestern Minnesota and our partnerships with our local colleges and the schools in our area and the southwest central service come up. Our college, this spring already, we're having some classes where high school students are working with the local college, earning college credits. I know in Canby, they're taking some diesel courses, high school students coming to the college. They wouldn't have been able to offer that level of education at their local high school. Now, working together, we're able to do that, down out closer to the Wyndham area, offering some industrial, or some IT-type programming, again, high-demand areas for our schools. So thank you for those dollars for the current technical academies. We really do appreciate that.
Thank you. Other comments?
Well, the ditch, I'll just maybe speak about ditch mowing. That's kind of been a big issue. So I think the working group just met for the last time a couple days ago, a week ago...
This last week.
This last week they did. And so it'll be interesting to see kind of what they, they come out with. I'm not really, I don't have a whole lot of faith in it as far as I'm listening to what we had to see out in rural Minnesota, but we'll see, so...
I have a feeling that that report is due to us in the next couple of weeks, the legislative body. Last year, Chris carried the bill in the House and I carried it in the Senate, put a moratorium on road ditch mowing until we get into April, so that we'd have some time to get the stakeholders together and kind of sort this thing out. I'm hearing from stakeholders that have been on this committee that there's, they feel that the bill is not going to come out to what they have requested as stakeholders, and I'm hearing that from people that are not just on the agricultural side, but people that are on the Department of Transportation side also. So we'll see where that plays out, but, and once we get that, then we can take a look at what the next move will be, if we need to extend this moratorium further to try to get this worked out, just what we need to do. But once we get that, we can see. I hope that it's going to be a surprise and it's something that's workable for both sides, but I'm not going to hold my breath. It doesn't sound very promising. But we will continue to work on it. Other questions or concerns? Yes, sir?
You know, the governor's bonding request at $100 million for affordable housing, and he's got the affordable housing task force going on. What do you see from both the Senate and the House side? Any feelings towards, is pushing affordable housing, is there a vote in favor, some, any opposition? What do you look at?
You know, I think, you know, there is appetite for it to a certain extent, but I think there's a lot more interest in, you know, workforce housing, you know, really, you know, really, you know, just the way it works out when it comes to a number of different issues, the way it's funded, but also kind of the issues that it addresses and where, you know, whether you're a Jackson or whether you're a Roseau or a rural city that's really just had a huge business growth that is simply outpacing the capacity for buildings and, you know, the biggest issue with some of the workforce housing issues is there's a disconnect between the bank and the value and the amount that they put out, and what the assessed value after something constructed, and what it'll be worth afterwards. And so that's the issue, is that you still, yeah, a worker may be willing to put the, but they simply can't go out and get the loan because they know if they put $100,000 into a home, they go out and get a loan for 80 or whatever it would be, that what's the value of that home after the project's complete? And if it's not at least more or holds a certain value, then the bank, by law, federal rule, can't get engaged in the project. And so that's that gap place where members are a little bit more comfortable working in that particular area where, okay, this is really filling a, and, yeah. So I mean, I could see there're going to be, and there'll likely be a bit of both and a little bit of flavor, but it really depends on the finance of it all. And just engaging business, and, you know, a lot of those companies have stepped forward and really, you know, put the, you know, been very active in finding homes. And I've heard stories of even cities where, you know, they'll go out, a business owner or the home, the housing group will go out and visit with folks that are, you know, moving on in age and saying, hey, what's your plan for this house? You know, like, we'd love to be able to work with you, and, you know, they're like, oh, I never, they haven't thought of what, you know, and they're happy to go there and do this and get it, get people there. So, yeah. So, yeah.
With the apartment side of it, the problem that we have is getting people to understand the importance of that gap funding. So let's say that you want to build an apartment in Marshall and you want it to be for workforce housing or low-income housing. So you take, you put your plans together and you figure out what's going to cost per unit to rent it out. And there's no way that people in Marshall can afford to pay that amount. So we come in with gap funding and subsidize in that middle layer so that you can make, you can build the project, get financing, and yet make a lower rate of apartment rent work. We have a hard time getting a lot of folks to realize where that subsidy's going. Too many people immediately feel that they're subsidizing the builder. Well, in a sense they are, but the builder then is subsidizing, not subsidizing the building, the builder is reducing the rent to the person renting the apartment. And that's what makes these flows. So the more we can educate people that you're really not subsidizing the builder, what you're doing is using that money to reduce rent, I think we'll have a better chance of getting more of these done. But we did, we didn't put much money in last year. I think it was ten million out of the bonding part of it. There was also some money came through some grants through the Housing Development Committee. There was some money came out of grants there. But on our bonding tour, we've been talking and hearing a lot about workforce housing and low-income housing, especially workforce housing. And so that's really been coming up. And so I think it's good to see that happening, not good that it's happening, but good that we're hearing about it if it's going to happen because that way we get a little better sense of how important it is to all the, to so many communities in rural Minnesota, not just a few, which will eventually drive the amount of dollars that goes into bonding up. So it's, we're becoming aware of it more than we have in the past, probably. Yep. Other questions?
What is the House, and it stands on Universal Preschool?
You know, we put forward through the Ed bill, we had some grant dollars put forth for stipends, for families to kind of go forward. And, you know, I'm generally not in favor of it. I believe that, you know, parents should have the ability to go and do what they want, whether they are putting their kids in a daycare or, you know, that's a fundamental issue. We've got a lot of small businesses across the state that, in order to create a business model that works when it comes to an age group, and I believe that that was Governor Dayton's goal as part of it is to take down part of that business structure because they opposed him in certain areas of his policy. And so, you know, it's, I believe that we should be putting parents in charge of it, not having a state program where we're mandating into schools what's going on, but allow parents to have, you know, a voucher essentially to say, whether I want to go to a private preschool or whatever, but as far as making it a mandatory production, I don't believe we should be doing that, so.
We, I thought we had a pretty good grant program. The only problem with the grant program is we weren't getting enough money in it to get it fully out in rural Minnesota. But we have students that need some assistance and need to have some professional guidance in order to get ready for kindergarten. And so there was a grant program to where you could get money so that you could send your child to a school to help move that forward. And I think that that was working very well. We needed to put more funding in it. But instead, the governor chose to go to four-year-olds in the classroom. And a couple of things, in my opinion, have happened. I think that it's put a lot of pressure on some of our rural schools that don't have the facilities. It's also put pressure on the rural schools that maybe have gotten a grant or two and now don't get the next grant, and so what do they do? But I think where the biggest impact of moving students into those earlier pre- childhood areas has been on daycare centers. And if you take a look at when the real impact of putting four, three and four-year-olds in the classroom, that's when we started to see daycare start to get weak and shiver. And now, one of the biggest issues we have throughout Minnesota is finding daycares for children. And there just, two things have happened. When the unionization of daycares failed, it seemed like there was, okay, if you don't want to join our union, we'll go through the Department of Health and we'll increase the rules and regulations and we'll fix this. And if you take a look at the rules and regulations that have increased on daycare since that failure, it's unbelievable. And so now, to show how much this pressure's gotten to be, now the University of Minnesota just announced last week that they're pretty much planning on closing now their daycare that's been there for forty-some years. So this is a very, very big issue. And we need to figure out how we're going to get daycares back in these communities. And we've got a lot of work to do for that because that, there's been a lot of things that have shifted that's caused those things, yep.
And it's just, and it's an issue of focus. I mean, we had someone get up in the back of the room and talk about how, you know, we're doing partnerships with their technical colleges to, for high school students that can't get that service in, which is great, and I think those facilities exist. But, you know, the change is, you know, if you've got X amount of dollars, which we do, I mean, we say, well, we can just spend whatever we like. There are competing interests in all things. Should we be spending those dollars on the front end? I think it's important to a certain extent. But also if we're lacking in the spending on the back end when we're at those final years before people are going to get pushed off into the workforce and getting into skill sets that they need, that's, those are the decisions we make. Do you put it on the front or the back? Or do you slightly in both? Or do you fail on the front and the back end? You know, twenty-five, twenty-five or thirty-five percent of students that go to an average institution of higher education, so go to a college, need remedial coursework just to start into regular college. And so I'm not sure what the number is at Southwest, but.
It's lower than that, but it's still.
It's lower than that. It's still, so you've got a lot of students that are coming in that didn't get the skill set they needed at a high school. So whether it be in writing or math, likely in those two particular areas, maybe a chemistry potentially, but. So they're not getting at the back end, yet we're trying to focus kids when, well, they need to learn how to read. Well, I mean, there's countries where it's illegal to teach a child to read before the age of seven. That's Finland, right? And anyone would argue that Finland's probably one of the best educational institutions when it comes to teaching kids and the understanding of the brain science and what you should or shouldn't be doing to a child. And yet, you know, we're jamming it down these, some of these kids' throats and really turn. I mean, I would make an argument from a boy, having two sons, that there's, when it comes to education, a difference between a boy and a girl and the way their brains develop and what they can take and what they get discouraged. You know, as a young kid, if you're being taught to read when your brain simply, chemistry is not able to pick it up, well, that automatically turns your body and your brain against education as a very young age and say, I can't succeed at these things. And so there are scientific ways to move about this thing rather than saying, hey, you know what? We need to just get these kids in the classroom as early as possible and start putting math, science, and reading on them as fast as we can. Maybe they just need to be kids.
Other comments, questions? Yes, sir?
Senator Dayton and Representative Swedenski, thanks for coming today. Just a small comment on merit, and then I'm going to talk about a couple other bigger topics in the city of Marshall. One of the other things that the Minnesota merit would like to have is a sign off of fifty-nine. And I've missed the turn probably five times.
Oh, one thirty-three? Sure.
I know you have a close relationship with Minnesota Department of Transportation. So if you could maybe mention something.
Okay. Okay.
Have you requested, have you requested it through the Department of Transportation?
Yes, they turned us down.
Okay.
We actually, we had talked to your administrative assistant about someone with the industry that was talking about, so we were asking for a little bit of a lift, how's that?
Okay, sure.
We apparently didn't meet their threshold for the diversity of services we provided was the reason. They offered an appeal to us if we wanted to, but we thought we'd wait and see if other things worked. But that's, but yes, they sent us a, we had a formal request. They gave us a formal rejection. And we encourage everyone to look, to come out here and get to know where we're at.
Yeah.
That's part of why we're doing things like that.
So this would be a commercial installation, kind of a.
You got this rejection.
December?
Okay.
December, I think.
And did you send a copy of that to Wendy?
I did.
Okay.
Good, okay.
We, again, for us, you know, obviously, we want to serve Lyon County residents, but the intent also is to be a retail facility. And, you know, for administrators having a hard time finding it, you know, obviously, you made it, but almost every time that I'm out here and talk to people, I get, I'd have been here fifteen minutes early, but I was going over by ADM and then I went there. We're sort of on the edge of the city limits in a newer facility. So we really, we had made a low, informal local request a couple of times before, but this time we actually had the formal paperwork in, so.
We got the ishday on it.
We'll just hold to John. You're in Region Eight, right?
Yes.
We'll get ahold of John, he'll help us.
Thank you.
So two other projects, and I'm going to actually pivot to staff. If Bob Benmore from Wastewater could just give a little brief description on our upcoming project and then I'll change Jeff Larson's view of you for water treatment.
Okay.
There's a part that the state plays a grant funding for those two projects. And I just thought for the people who are here and for your, if you could share those projects.
Sure.
I'm Bob Benmore, I'm the City of Marshall wastewater superintendent. This summer, we are, we're actually designing right now for about a nine and a half million dollar treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant upgrades. We're not eligible much for the grant fund on that portion of it. We are a C from rolling just loans, which is very difficult for us. Just to touch a little bit on, our treatment plant was built in nineteen seventy-five. We've done several multimillion-dollar upgrades over the years to keep it functional, keep meeting new restrictions that were put on, new limits, very, very expensive. And we got a new chloride limit in our last permit. And we did get a ten-year compliance schedule. That's coming down to have to meet that in 2024. So we've been doing a lot of debt scratching, trying to figure out how we're going to do that. Salt removal is extremely expensive in wastewater. And the best way to correct that is to stop it from being entered at the point source of the raw water. Home softening is the biggest culprit there. So along with that, MMU is in design of a further softening project. I'll let Jeff talk about that a little bit. That's actually a wastewater-driven project for MMU that we're going to have to be dealing with now too. So support of the governor's water and wastewater infrastructure bonding bill is extremely important for us.
And we put a hundred and sixty-two million in the last bonding bill for this. This year, I think we'll see a strong piece in that bonding bill, but we also are looking at some of the LCCMR funds. LCCMR was created for clean water, and this certainly is talking about clean water. So we're looking at what we might be able to do there to help increase some grant dollars through that process so we can get more beef in the tank there with dollars for the PFA. Do you know what your ranking is with the PFA on this project?
The wastewater project, I don't, we won't be applying for PFA on that. I'm not sure if Jeff knows on the water side.
On the water side?
Just hang on a minute, Jeff. On, will you be applying for USDA grants on this process?
We will look at every funding source we can get. There's a lot of smaller ones out there. We can pick up one or two of those also.
Do you not qualify for PFA funding or is there a reason you're not going through that process?
The PSC is the big portion of it and that's for basically new permit limits.
Okay.
Doesn't help us for our projects or upgrading of.
What you currently have, yeah.
Sorry.
Jeff Larson, Water Officer, Manager for Marshall Utilities. As Bob mentioned, we are, helps us the broader South. Southwest Minnesota water's very hard in the ranges for Marshall, fifty-six grains per gallon. We currently soften down to about thirty-five. Our goal is to get to about five. That's about the cutoff point where people decide, well, hey, turn softeners down or potentially get rid of home softening. We are dumping thousands of pounds of salt into the river each day just to communicate with Marshall. So this, this project helps alleviate that need of chloride limit. We're at about sixty percent design on that project. Estimates right now, it's going to be around the nine million mark to add the addition to the water plant. And that's why we're obviously, talked to you earlier about supportive of the PSC.
Yep. So between the two, you're looking at about an eight, between the back end, the front end, eighteen million total? Okay.
And will any of yours qualify for PFA?
No. Of course, this has a bigger effect. True Shrimp Project, that was a very big determining factor on when we got in the pipeline as far as a facility is because the additional costs do soften that water to a point that they need it.
Yeah.
You know, it has a lot, a lot of effects on the community.
Mm-hmm.
Very important for us.
It is, it is.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
But is there a way that some of the clean water legacy downwires could be put into the?
Very tough. I think they should be. I think it qualifies. I think it comes under that, under their purview. I think that when that bill was passed, I think people expected that it was going to go for clean water. A lot of it is going for clean water. But what we're finding is it's maybe, I think we're seeing more land being bought as a purifier to clean water near rivers and streams and sometimes not so close. But I think we could have a more direct impact if we could use it for things like this. But that would be very hard to get that done. It's very, when that, when the bill was passed, when the constitutional amendment was passed, then there are a lot of things put into place because there was a lot of things that were really uncertain at the time of the passage of the bill, which is not uncommon. The bill passes and now they go through and define exactly what it qualifies for. And so there's some pretty strict qualifications put in there after the bill was passed. And so it certainly does, it certainly is a clean water. I mean, that's not what I'm saying. It's just that I would really like to see that expanded a little bit. But it's hard to change at once. It's in place, it's going to be very hard to change, but it's a very good point, yep. Other questions? Yes, sir?
Yeah, thank you for coming out here again. Round of thanks, so thank you very much. I have a concern about our community mainly, with, deals with rural Minnesota, that deals with mental health, care, special needs care. I have an adult with a diagnosis of autism. I have a son who are autistic.
Okay.
And when we went through the process of diagnosis, one of my sons was told that his, the care that he needed wasn't available in our area. The closest place was my county. And that's not once a week, that's every day.
Okay.
I love Marshall. I love this area and I want to be here, but there are so many deficiencies in terms of healthcare and mental health issues that we just don't have. And I'm wondering what, not what the legislators are, what are you doing to help make this better in our area? Because I'm not seeing a lot of growth here.
Mm-hmm. Well, you know, whenever you're dealing with folks with very specialized skill sets, I mean, ultimately, that's the, I mean, you can't just go to a building that says "mental health" on it and get it, right? I mean, you actually need to have people in that building that have the training and have the expertise that can fulfill those needs. And so oftentimes, whether, no matter what the issue is, whether it be healthcare, heart care, leg, whatever it might be, you know, there's issues of capacity. And so whenever you have the more and more detailed and specific type of care, whether it be in mental health or whatnot, having the capacity to actually support the skill set. So, I mean, doctors aren't cheap, psychologists aren't cheap, life coaches aren't cheap. So those are sometimes the issues that we have. And so maximizing the ability to attract healthcare people, healthcare workers, whether it be doctors, psychologists, whatever, to rural Minnesota is a big deal. And so, you know, incentives from a tax perspective, you know, hey, we'd like you to come and serve in a rural Minnesota, here are some incentives to do that. You know, some of the big issues, especially with just doctors in general, if you talk to Vera, to get someone that's maybe currently practicing in Sioux Falls, that's maybe from the city of Marshall and would love to be able to come back so they can bring their kids to Grandma and Grandpa, they have to offer them seven or ten percent more just in physical pay to make up that gap of what they're losing just by moving across a border, let alone giving them incentives to actually come here. So that's just to give them flat. So that's, you know, from a cost basis and all those other things. So what do we need to be addressing to do that to ultimately? what do we need to be addressing to do that, to ultimately get those people into those skill sets to choose it, choose it as a career?
Tax incentives is what you recommend?
Well, yeah. Tax incentives, those are, that's one thing. I mean, you can't force someone into a, a policy decision. Also, and then just in general, from a perspective of higher education, you know, whenever you can be as regionally significant as you can. So, whenever, you know, things that we've worked on in agriculture, I mean, those things can be moved into other areas of the economy by creating, working with schools of higher education to offer those things that are in need in those particular regional areas. I think it's always a good thing because all of a sudden, you've got folks going into a major that I can get five miles from my house. What's the chance that you get, you know, you get that major, you're five miles from house, you're going to move 100 miles away to get the job, or maybe there's a job opening right in that town. And so, skill set, getting people into the skill set, people getting attracted into those particular work, that type of work, and then also being friendly so that when they do get that skill set, that from a tax perspective, they don't suffer with that by, by operating here in Southwest Minnesota.
I think it's a combination of things. I don't think it's just one thing that's going to trip that trigger. I think that, you know, Chris mentioned some things. I think also we're looking at private, public-private partnerships. We're looking at partnerships with education, with the health system, looking at ways to try to fund it, and also, of course, to attract the people. If you do have those pieces in place, you've got to be able to attract people. So, it's a combination of several things, but it is being, certainly is being worked at, not only at the legislative level, but at the health and human services level. I mean, this is, this is, this is a very big issue. And it, it's a very broad issue. I mean, when we start talking about mental health and stuff, we have, we have fallen behind rather rapidly, rather quickly. That field grew rather quickly. I don't know if the field grew rather quickly or if we're doing a better job of finding that people need more help than what they thought they did, or we're finding that there's more people out there that probably haven't been diagnosed. But if we take a look, it's kind of interesting if you, you know, we take a look at mental health back in the 40s and 50s, we had 11 different big institutions. And then those closed in the 60s because of the fact that we came out with a lot of medications that took care of that, so we didn't need those facilities. As the mental health issue started to grow in the last decade or so, we were really quite slow to respond. We just did not respond to it. I don't think we realized the magnitude of it. And when that finally, when, when that finally got recognized, we were way behind the eight ball. So, it's not a very good direct answer, but I don't have a direct answer.
I think there are issues. At some point, I'd like to follow up with you about what you actually think we can solve the issue, which was my question.
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks.
So, I just want to follow up with that. So, with my work at Southwest Central Service Club, we are providing services to students that are autistic in the early childhood, fourth grade. So, it's really in that, that high school, elementary high school age. There is a, there is a, I'll call it a budding challenge for us with that. We've seen growth in enrollment in our programs. And we have five programs around the region of about 14 to 15% enrollment students every year for about the last five years.
Increase?
Increase.
Okay.
We're well over 200 students that week. Our initial program had about 50. And, and so the need is there. The challenge that we have that I think is really important is, is access to programming. So, our 18 counties is huge. And I tell this story a lot when I talk about this. We had a student from Minnetoka that we were transporting to Cosmos because that's where the program was located, 75 miles one way, totally inappropriate, backed up with a program. And so, we are right now in the, in the planning stage of trying to locate six facilities, care facilities around the region that would be, that we could use for students, artistic students, students with other behavioral needs, students with mental health needs. The, the challenge we have is access to square footage and staff. We can deal with the staff side. We're doing pretty well. The square footage side is, is really a challenge right now. There's no funding mechanism for our agency to, to build or lease or fix deferred maintenance issues on these facilities.
Okay.
And it's an equity issue. There are, there are schools in the state of Minnesota, in particular around the 10-county metro area, that were built specifically for students with these needs. The example I use, we use Bellevue. The Bellevue program is full. It's a great repurpose of an elementary school, but that elementary school is not designed to be a facility for students with high needs like autism or other behavioral needs. So, so just wanted to share that with you because we're working hard on some of those, those issues.
Sure.
But there, there's a lot of, a lot of challenges. And typically, what we run into is bonding in Minnesota is always kind of like been at arm's length for local public school districts. And, and I don't know that we can keep doing that. I know not only do we have issues with our specialized programs, but we have schools in our region who are trying to do, not nice to have, need to have square footage. And, and the current way of making that happen is, is onerous. And it's just, it's a challenge to get that done. But we could talk more about that. But there's, that's not, I would say it's the fastest exponential growth, and that's the fastest growing service that we're providing to our KCO schools and that. It's, it's needed, and we have to find some solutions that go where...
Sure. Yep. Good.
Good question.
One more question.
Well, I was just going to add to that. Specifically, there actually aren't some of those specialized providers even available. The number of people that are going through those programs to be psychologists, psychiatrists, mental health workers, they're just physically not there. So, it kind of goes back to the broadband issue of being able to hopefully access those services from someone in another location, but, you know, do it through our technology. I know it's not the greatest answer, but it, it would be one solution. The other side of that, though, is to work with the insurance companies so that they will cover the cost for those services. If you're not, you know, if telehealth is not always covered by insurance.
Okay.
And so, that's a whole other issue that I think needs to be addressed from the insurance side of things. Because if people can't get it covered, they may not seek the help. And that's not helping matters any either. So, I just wanted to add that.
That's a good...
Well, us...
Yeah. Is that, okay. Who's in charge today? I don't know.
For being here, and I'd like to thank the Marshall Chamber of Commerce for always graciously hosting this for us. Thank you very much. We do appreciate it. And thank the folks here at the Merit Center for letting us use your facilities. We truly do appreciate it. But we really appreciate all you folks coming out today and joining in the conversation and giving some ideas what's going on in the community, what some of the needs are and what some of the things that are working are. We really do appreciate that because we'll be starting in another two weeks. We'll be back in session on February 20th. And a lot of things that Chris and I pick up at these town hall meetings end up being sometimes in a bill or an amendment or things like that. So, coming to these meetings is very important to us. We hope that it gives you some insight of what's going on, but it certainly is important to us so that we can get kind of a temperature of what's going on in our various communities to know what kinds of things are needed. And look, some of the things we talked about today, we're hearing in all the town hall meetings, and it's, that's always, you know, always important to know what those issues are, especially when we get issues that are filed in a cross-section of all the different communities in our, in the district. So, thank you very much for being here.
Again, thank you. Thanks for coming out. And, you know, our offices, we've got a lot of flipping of staff, especially in the House. We've got, I'm getting a new LA again. So, feel free to give my office a call. And if you guys are coming to the Capitol for a lobby day, or make sure you look us up. Or if you're just there on your own with your family and up in the Twin Cities for maybe a state high school meet of some sort this winter, don't hesitate to call. We'll get you, get you around. We can either get a tour set up or maybe have you come on the floor or something like that. We can talk issues and we can have a little fun, too. So...
Even get you to testify.
There you go. Absolutely.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.